Good morning. It's 9:00 a.m. and I will call to order the April 20th Celine County Board of Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Will you please stand for the flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, everyone can make sure that all the microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly. I would appreciate it now if Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Brad.
Assuming that users are using the Zoom client, if you select the Participants tab toward the bottom of the screen, that will reveal a raise hand function toward the lower right-hand corner of the screen, and that will let the host know that you would like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Are there any member of the public that wish to speak at this time? And please state your name and address.
My name's Dennis Pinoide. I live in Geneseal, but I was born here in Salina. I want to re-talk about the vaccine, the so-called vaccine. Who is, and this is a general question, who is in charge of this? Because the idea that they would give the first responders the vaccine first, well, you know, my thinking about that is that is not a vaccine because it is actually a gene therapy. And just not by, that's just not my thinking. That's thinking from doctors, everybody from Professor Francis Boyle to Dr. McCollough.com, who I've been listening to for at least 15 years. And they are stating that it is a gene therapy, the M lowercase, RNA uppercase, that is a gene therapy. The M stands for messenger. It's not a vaccine. It had nothing to do with immunity. The regular vaccine, like the polio vaccine, that used to be, that works with immunity. You put something in your body, and then your immune system works with your body to make it not harmful to you. And that's been happening forever. But this new gene therapy is a messenger. It's a recipe that they put into your arm that's going to go into your body, and you are just going to, it's going to reprogram just about every cell in your body, except for your eyeballs. And the eyeballs and ovaries for ladies is going to reprogram everything in your body. And they're not advertising this. They're advertising a vaccine. So that's just my continued re-
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments by the public? At this time, we will move to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of prior minutes as presented, April 6th, approval of tax troll adjustments, and approval of accounts payable as presented, approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to amend or delete items from the consent agenda? At this time, I will stand as approved. We will move into the action items. Item one?
Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation with Laura Kermer from community, or the community engagement coordinator with CAPS.
Good morning.
Good morning. Whereas we are living in a time when disclosures of sexual abuse and harassment are becoming mainstream, child sexual abuse still lives in secrecy and shame. In Kansas, reports of abuse have increased by 64.97% over the last 20 years, which indicates people are recognizing the signs. And whereas, children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas, child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas's families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently, building the foundations of communities. And whereas, by providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. And whereas, there were 898 cases of child abuse and neglect investigated, investigated by the Department of Children and Families in Celine County alone last year. And whereas, Child Advocacy and Parenting Services, Inc. provides both prevention and intervention programs designed to reduce risk factors associated with child abuse and neglect while focusing on educating parents and empowering children. And whereas, in 2020, the global pandemic brought unique challenges removing children from the regular interaction of safe, caring adults with increased isolation and, in many cases, increased stress by changing roles and unemployment. CAPS remained operational for the entire year and conducted forensic interviews for 127 child victims of abuse or neglect and/or witnesses to a violent crime. Those victims also received professional advocacy, a medical exam, and care by trained sexual assault nurse examiner on the sexual assault response team, referral to trauma-focused mental health services, and follow-up supports. These services are delivered through a multidisciplinary collaboration between City of Salina and Celine County Law Enforcement, CAPS, Salina Regional Health Center, Department of Children and Families Child Protective Custody, Celine County Attorney's Office, Central Kansas Mental Health Center, and Private Therapists. And whereas, Child Advocacy and Parenting Services, Inc. began as a child abuse prevention coalition in 1978, the agency has a vision of a place where every child is safe, healthy, and strong. CAPS hopes to shine a light on abuse to create awareness and increase support through the following public events. Go Blue Salina. Businesses are encouraging employees to wear blue jeans and/or royal blue. Can collect funds for CAPS and spread awareness by taking photos of employees to show their blue support. Each participant will receive a sticker to wear showing they believe every child should be safe and loved. A pinwheel parade. Families are spreading awareness with pinwheel coloring pages displayed in their windows for all to see as they enjoy the beauty of spring. And Pin Wheels for Prevention Challenge. A roaming pinwheel garden that is spread via donations from individuals who wish to send the garden to others to show they believe in creating spaces where every child is safe, healthy, and strong. Therefore, we, the Board of Celine County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you, Laura. Very interesting. And is there anything else? I know that these here, you stated these items. Do you have anything else that's going to be on the web or anything else?
No, but you can find more information about these activities on our website, caps of salina.org, or on our Facebook page, Caps of Salina.
Okay. Any other comments by the commissioners? Anything by the public? Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, we declare April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Second the motion. There's been a motion and a second that we approve Child Abuse Prevention and Child Month proclamation. Following that, is there any other comments? Hearing that, I'll take a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. And I have a signed proclamation here for you. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. I know some people believe you. Hey, thank you, Laura. Have a great day. Have a fun week.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number two.
RFA 153-21, the Oliver Hagg scholarships with David Flaherty II, Livestock and Expo Director.
Good morning, Mr. Flaherty.
Good morning, Commissioner. This morning, I'm here to do an RFA for the Oliver Hagg Scholarship. Consider for approval two renewable $1,000 Oliver Hagg Memorial Scholarships for fall of 2021. These are renewable for four years, provided the student maintains a 3.0 grade point average and remains in an Hagg-related field. Alternative for actions are to approve the two scholarships or deny two scholarships. Staff recommends approving two renewable $1,000 scholarships. Our scholarship committee met April 12th, 2021, and it was the consensus that the two applicants we received were all highly qualified. Both were chosen to receive this award. There is no budget impact. These dollars come from a farm account, which is funded by the lease payments made on the land that Mr. Hagg willed to Celine County in 1991. And the balance in the farm account is $195,142.65.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any other comments by the commissioners?
First, welcome to the podium in your new position.
Thank you, sir.
How many participants could we have in that Oliver Hagg right now?
Currently, there's 14, but two are going to be dropping off this year.
And I noticed it seems like we usually have four, five, six names, and we only had two this year.
Only had two. We've got some things that's going to try to happen next year. We're going to reach out to some of the 4-H clubs and reach out to the schools a little better and see if we can get more participants for it.
Right, right.
David, my question is, I see that you don't name those that received them. Is that a different, come at a different time, and you're just merely looking for the approval to award those scholarships, and we'll do it at a later date? Is that how we're going to work it?
Yeah, we're looking for the approval today, and then hopefully in a couple weeks, we can get the two together to come down here and give them their certificates.
Okay, and I commend you on trying to reach out to these other things, and maybe at some point in time, we could possibly attend, someone from the county could attend to commencement, or not commencement, but an exercise that they have at each of the high schools, and tell them that these are available. And maybe we could get out some printed literature, or maybe we already do, I don't know. But certainly, I shared Jim's concerns that only two applied because these are pretty nice things to get.
Yes, and I follow that. Because like, being on that committee is like, we did have quite the discussions on how to reach out better next year and what we did this year, and how, what's the reasoning. So there's quite a discussion on all that. But, thank you, Dave. Is there any other comments by the commissioner? Any comment by the public? Seeing none, I'll be moved, bring it back to the commissioner for a discussion of possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve two renewable $1,000 scholarships as outlined in RFA 153-21.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 153-21 Oliver Hagg scholarships. Are there any further comments? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees? Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We've moved into informational items. Item one?
Idle Fund Report with Jim DeBois, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Mr. DeBois.
Good morning, Commissioners. On this nice sunny day, well, a little bit of snow. I wish I had better news to tell you. It's not absolutely, totally bleak, but, you know, we are down in our collections, unfortunately. If you look at the Idle Fund Report, and Brad, I'm going to have you kind of go up on that page if you don't mind. If you can move it up. Yep, there you go. Keep on going. There, about right there would be fine. This year, or this particular quarter, we earn $76,401.52 in our interest rates. Now, compared to last quarter, where we raised $207,165.2, we are kind of in a deficit of $130,763.50. And that's about three-quarters of the way down the page. If you look kind of in the middle about the interest that we get, the majority of the interest we get right now is off of our regular bank account from Bennington State Bank. The larger interest rates do come from the CDs that we have around a million or $2 million. And usually, we go out anywhere from a year to two years. I try to ladder everything so it keeps everything fluid into that process. The disappointing part about that is if you look at, oh, three-quarters of the way down the page in that front where it says American State Bank, ASP, Certificates of Deposits, we're only earning like $1.81, $1.63 worth of interest on some of those. But those are things that are kind of out of my control. Bids that we've been getting in are anywhere from a .61 to a .90 at the highest. So the days of interest rates where we were getting 2.25 or larger, I think, are going to be gone for a while. If you look towards the bottom of the page, and I know it's kind of tough, interest earned last year as of December 31st of 2020 was $383,527.22, which is still a lot higher compared to 2009, where we only earned $175,669. So kind of hoping for the best. We don't know what's going to happen during the course of the year, obviously. But we still continue to bid everything out and kind of go from there. Questions on the Idle Fund Report?
Yeah, Jim?
Yeah.
The lack of income on this, is that strictly due to the percentage that's being paid? Or is it due to a lag in collections? Or do we just not have as much money on interest?
No, this amount that we have out there is exactly the same. That's just the percentage that we get because some of that's variable.
So we still have as much money as we had the previous year?
Yeah, yeah, we haven't lost our principal.
The-
Yeah, the principal's still-
The income that's being derived from that amount is-
Yes, sir.
Is the problem.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm glad you kind of brought that up because I did, just for your information, pull out the amount of collections we've had on taxes as of year to date. And this was out the 15th when I did this report. We're at 60.94% of collections on taxes compared to last year. We were at 60.42. So we're about even all the way through there. There's no desperate things I need to come here and talk to the commissioners about, thank goodness. And so far, the taxpayers of Celine County have been paying their taxes.
I did notice in the publication in the paper that we do have a tax sale in the process of being-
Right.
Some properties will be put up for sale.
And that'll be up to our county counselor, who controls that.
And I'd like to make note of the fact that to those people that choose to delay paying their taxes for two or three years, you're really hurting the county because, I mean, and Jamie, you might be able to expand on this, but I think those publications, if I'm not mistaken, cost us in excess of $10,000 a year to publication, publish that in the papers. Is that the amount, or?
Actually, Jim can answer that because he does the publications on the delinquencies.
It's closer to $30,000.
$30,000 a year that the county spends to tell someone that they are in the arrears on their taxes that they already know.
Yes, sir.
And so, I mean, you're, the people that choose to do it that way are really hurting the county in the long run.
Well, not only the county, but you're hurting the city and the state.
Absolutely.
So.
Jim, I got a question.
Yeah.
Noticing that your 2020 quarterly interest going through all four quarters, I thought the first quarter was quite large, and then it dropped off quite a bit. Is that due to interest rates, or is that due to when the CDs might become?
No, it's due to the collections. December 20th is when we collect our first half for 2021, or 2020, I'm sorry.
So that number is always quite large.
It's always going to be the largest, yeah. So the two numbers that are going to probably be more predominant are going to be December 20th and May 10th. And that's because those are the due dates on taxes. So those are the ones that are going to show the most. And then it starts to dwindle quite a bit.
But I'm talking about interest earned?
Yeah, and that would be, if you look at like Bennington State Bank where it says special now account, you're probably going to have a little bit more money in that area because we have more money in the bank, and we're earning interest off of that. Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments?
Okay. Thank you.
For the reporters, Jim. Item two?
Pre-trial stats update with Andrew Pelant, pre-trial coordinator with Community Corrections.
Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm going to give the pre-trial stats update for the months of January 2021 through March 2021. There were 49 placements on pre-trial services in the months of January through March. As of March 31st, 136 clients are actively being supervised, 14 are in custody, 327 have had their charges dismissed or have been sentenced, and 176 have had their pre-trial bond revoked. There have been 653 placements on pre-trial supervision through March 31st, impacting the Celine County Jail by 79,567 days. I'm going to add my normal disclaimer on that number. Every defendant who's arrested and booked in gets an original bond set, so they have an opportunity to make the original bond. By the time we meet with them, they're still in custody. We do the assessment and send those on to the district court judges who then review it. And so then the bond could be modified. But again, that's the number that I use in there, but there is that disclaimer that I'll always give. Our pre-trial program continues to respond to changes affected by the COVID-19 pandemic and how it affects our clients. We continue to follow up with clients on court dates and times, and if their appearance is in person or by video. If by Blue Jeans video, we make sure the clients have the information they need to appear. We still allow clients to report into Community Corrections if they have an issue with internet connection or their smartphone devices. We allow them to come into Community Corrections, use a laptop of ours, and allow them to appear in court that way so they can avoid any issues or potential warrants. We talked about our pilot program. Pre-trial, along with Drug Court and Juvenile Services are a part of the pilot program with UpTrust. It's a platform to communicate with our clients by text, email messages, and send out automated reminders related to court dates and times, office appointments, and other pertinent information needed for the effective supervision. The Public Defender's Office and Court Services continue to participate using the UpTrust platform. Over the last several months, where the program, UpTrust, is starting to kind of modify to our platform with what we need them to do, we work with the team and meet with representatives from UpTrust every two weeks to go over any, anything that may need change or any suggestions that we have. They're close to implementing a new web interface as a response to the dynamic needs of our agency and our partner agencies and future partners we anticipate bringing on. One of the partners that we anticipate bringing on relatively soon is the Central Kansas Foundation. We, besides the services that we already offer in the supervision and the reminders of court, which is all effective in someone appearing in court and not reoffending or not having a failed-to-appear end up back in the jail, is our ability to refer out the resources. And by bringing Central Kansas Foundation on to UpTrust, it allows us to communicate with them in real time or with their counselors. So if we have an individual who's in treatment, and there is maybe a barrier or an issue, or even just a recognition, a positive recognition, they can reach us quicker so we can respond to any barriers or any issues with a client while they're in treatment before it kind of gets to the moment where maybe they get discharged from treatment, they get removed. And so bringing on these partners in the community and allowing us to communicate with them in real time is going to allow us to better serve the clients, and again, continue to help them, you know, get through the court process and then deal with any underlying issues they may have. We continue to help, as I previously talked about, the underlying issues or concerns by making appropriate community referrals for resources. And we also help cover costs so they receive the support they need. We make several referrals still to drug and alcohol services. I just talked about Central Kansas Foundation. Mental health services with Central Kansas Mental Health Center mainly. We have a mental health liaison who works in our office several times a week. So when clients come into our office, we're able to get them to meet with her. And so when, if there's any mental health treatment or anything that they need on that area, she's already in our office and responding. We do housing, transportation, and several other resources. We are in the process of reaching out to Ottawa County to see, we're trying to bring on a third position for pre-trial. Our program is growing, and in order for it to continue to, I think, be effective and do the positive things it's been doing, we need to expand the program with the supervision. We're getting a lot of clients. We just want to make sure we can attend to each client and their needs, you know, effectively to continue to move the program forward. I do know we're going to, we're in the process of reaching out to Ottawa County to see if they want to help with a third supervision officer. I think it'd be a dual officer with pre-trial supervision and drug court. And so that, you know, expansion is hopefully going to come around January. I don't have a lot more on that until Director Grievous, you know, goes to Ottawa County and meets with the commissioners over there. But that's just an update on where we're going with the program.
Okay. Any other comments or questions by the commissioners?
Andrew, I have a couple of questions. I want to go back up to item number three. But first of all, let me just say thank you to you, yourself, and the Community Corrections Department for trying to hang with this, this pre-trial thing and making it work, and the savings that are involved with it for the county.
You're welcome.
But first of all, March 31st, you said this is the pre-trial supervision through March 31st. What period of time? Is that just from January to now, or is that from when this, this program took off?
That is, who are actively being supervised now. And so that is, since the program has taken off. And so I go through March, it's not the numbers associated with January through March. And item number three, that's the whole number since the program started. So the 653 placements and the jail days affected are since the-
And we started this in 2019?
Actually, two years ago this month. So we're on a two-year anniversary of the program.
And you also mentioned a disclaimer of sorts, and this is where I kind of have a, I'm lost a little bit. 653 placements, saving the Celine County Jail 79,000 plus. That would, if you do the simple math on that, that's 121 days for each one of those people. That just doesn't seem to add up to me. That seemed like, I mean, because you've got people in there for, I assume in this program that are in for various, very simple offenses that maybe would normally just be in one or two nights in the jail at the most, if any at all. Now, I mean, I just don't see how we could average 121 days for all 653 of these people.
We get a majority of our clients who are on the lower risk that you talked about. Well, we still get a lot of our higher-risk clients with charges alleged that are more severe in nature, and their cash security bonds may be set, set a little higher than maybe some with not as severe as charges.
Well, again, I'll ask you, how do you come up with 79,000 days? I mean, how do you, how do you rationalize that number?
The stats I keep, so whenever somebody comes out on the pre-trial program, we start their active supervision and jail day saved when they bond out. So they may, the judge may assign them on a certain date, but let's just say they can't make whatever assigned bond for a week, or I'm just giving a number. And so when they get out of jail is when we start the jail day saved. So then we track it, as long as they're out of custody and in our program, actively being supervised, each day we'll consider that a jail day saved. And so since the program's inception, I've tracked those days. So that goes all the way back to those 653 placements. And, I mean, I had somebody who was on pre-trial supervision who just got sentenced, so he's been on the better part of two years. And so just him, you know, just that case alone saved a lot of days. But then you factor in everybody else, and that's where I get that number, is just all those kind of added up over time over the two years.
So using that as an example, then, if this person had- So using that as an example then, if this person had, if it took him two years to make bond, but he was still out of jail?
Well, no, it didn't take him two years to make bond, I'm sorry. He was in our program for two years. He made bond and then we supervised him. He was out of jail, he was coming in for appointments. We were following through with, with our supervision of him. And so while he was out of jail and reporting into community corrections or the pre-trial supervision, we consider that a jail day saved. We don't, anybody in custody, we don't count those days obviously as jail day saved. I only start counting those once they're out of jail and in our program and coming into our office and actively being supervised and being referred to resources.
It is still escaping me, I mean, you know, that that's an accurate way to track it. I mean, if, I mean, just as an example, if somebody were to be arrested for whatever, you know, trespassing and they get out on pre-trial, but they haven't made bond yet or haven't been approved for a bond, how does that?
Well, they will always be approved for bonds. So the way we look at some of those, the lower offenses is we have a program, release and detention guidelines that the district court judges set before the program started. So there's a lot of different risk factors that we look at, whether it's the severity of the crime. Do they have family in the community? Are they working? So we kind of have all these risk factor points that then give them a score. And so if they score under a certain level, the judges have already pre-approved OR bonds, which means that they can sign their own bond and they get out of jail. And so we do have several of those. But we, I mean, the ones that are in jail, we consider them inactive. I don't count those on the numbers.
But OR bond as an example, just as an example, are those people counted in these days that you're saving?
Yes. Yes, they're, they're saved because if we didn't do the risk assessment and they had an original bond that included a cash surety where they or their family would have to put up money, they would, they would remain in custody and depending on their financial circumstances, depending if they can, it can make the original cash surety bond. But because of the risk assessment, the pre-trial supervision, the judges, you know, have approved certain levels as the OR bonds, which then allows them to get out of custody if they don't have the financial means maybe to make a cash surety bond.
Okay.
Andrew, I got to follow up on Commissioner Vedrickson. If a person has an OR bond and they're out, they're calculated in these numbers that you stated, are we assuming, let's say they go ahead and wait for their bond to be set and pay that money? We're assuming that all of those dates that you mentioned, those people wouldn't have made their cash bond?
And that's a good examples of why I give the disclaimer. There is always an opportunity for them to make the cash bond. My belief and my experience over the years is that if, if someone's given a cash surety bond, it's set and they have the means or their family has the means and, I mean, nobody obviously wants to sit in jail. So they're, they're making arrangements and usually, I don't have any numbers to back it up, but if somebody has the means to make bond, it's generally going to be within 24 to 48 hours if they have those means. I mean, again, with the disclaimer, if somebody has a cash surety bond set and, you know, three, four, five weeks down the road, they just happen to have the means, they can always make that original bond, which is why I give that disclaimer.
Right.
And so we, we give them an opportunity depending on their risk levels on OR bonds, but they always have the chance to make that cash surety bond later.
But they're going to take the path of least resistance and take the OR bond versus putting cash up. But, but we know that some of these 79,000 days would have, would have had a cash bond involved. It stands to reason that.
They all would have had cash surety bond set because Kansas sets cash surety bonds on everything. Now, they, they can range depending on the pre-bond schedule. They can range anywhere from, you know, 5,000 cash surety for just a level five possession of methamphetamine, let's say, to some of the more severe charges, drug charges or person charges can go all the way up to 100,000, you know, 150,000 cash surety. And so, and then everything in between, just depending on the circumstances of the charges and then other, other factors. And so, but yes, everybody will always have, in Kansas, will have a cash surety bond set. What the pre-trial program does is just, it takes a look at the ones without the financial means mainly to, to pay that cash surety bond or maybe their family doesn't have the means. And the example I give when I do my intakes with my clients, when we talk about the importance of a pre-trial program, you know, compared to just a cash surety bond is that we could have two defendants who are arrested and charged with the same crime. And I'll just say, let's just say a possession of methamphetamine. It's a level five drug felony. One person can have three prior convictions, let's just say they're all drug-related. They're drug and alcohol addiction-related. And the other one can have 40 prior convictions. That could include battery and other assault. I mean, just to have a criminal history and let's just say they have family in the community. And there's all these different factors that the courts without pre-trial supervision wouldn't have. They get the charges from the county attorneys and just maybe whatever little information the county attorneys might be able to give them when they make a decision on bond. But on these two defendants, if one, let's just say the one with 40 conviction has access to money, let's say one of the charges is distribution, some of those defendants are going to have access to money and the one doesn't, this one's going to get out on bond, on the cash surety bond while the one who probably really needs the supervision and the resource referral is going to sit in jail just because they may, they might not have access to that money. And so they all will have cash surety bonds, but the reality is, you know, without the pre-trial program, a lot of them, even if the cash surety bond is low, depending on their financial circumstances, won't have the means to make that cash surety bond. And, you know, they're sitting in jail not necessarily because they're a risk or that they won't appear in court, just because maybe they're more poor. They don't have, you know, access to that money. And so, but that's why I give the days, but that's why I also give the disclaimer. Because they, I mean, they will have access, you know, the ability to make a cash surety bond, but those bonds can, can range up really high and they might not have the means.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Andrew, a quick question. You know, you, you talked a little bit about the high risk or the low risk, I mean, people here. Is, is the percentages of high risk compared to the low risk people here in Slayne County 50/50 or, or do you know that?
I would, I would say the majority of what we get are a lot of the significant or higher risk. But those are a lot of different factors. It could be the severity level alone can make it a higher risk without any other risk factors. So I would say just in my, just the two years, I think we've had a slightly higher, significant to higher risk caseload than the low to medium risk. But without having those in front of you, but I would say probably a little higher on that end.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Andrew, for the information.
You guys have a good day.
I know you guys keep busy and you do a great job.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item three.
Emergency management update with Michelle Barkley, emergency management director.
Morning, Michelle.
Good morning. Brad, thank you. Already ahead of it. So, good morning, Commission. This is just a brief update of what we've accomplished so far in 2021. Can you go to the next slide? Thank you. We are on day 404 of our county's COVID response. If you would have told me that's how long we would be doing this, I would not believe you. But we are still plugging along. Just recently, I would say in the last two months, we've begun to start incorporating some of our normal operations back into the office, which is very exciting. But we are still doing planning meetings, public assistance, sheltering, and the vaccine clinic. Next slide. So sheltering is still taking place at Webster Conference Center and at the Best Western. For the vaccine clinic, we are supporting them with gloves, spot bandages, and sharps containers. The FEMA programs that the county has is the medical care, funeral costs, and public assistance for category B expenses only. And planning meetings still consist of daily state briefings and local partner updates with the schools, hospitals, public health, public safety, and local businesses. Next slide. So just a little overview of some of the resource requests that we've been able to get due to our local disaster declaration for Slayne County. We have 5,702, those numbers updated this morning because I receive resource requests 24/7 and those numbers are always changing. We've been able to secure three different test options. That includes the nasal swabs, the rapid tests for the jail, as well as the saliva test. Cases of PPE, again, I just put in another order this morning. We're at 230 now, making the total requests of supplies that we've asked for to be 5,932. This just gives an idea. I updated that yesterday before I went home and then this morning at 7 o'clock, the numbers changed again. Next slide. On the sheltering front, again, these numbers changed last night around 7:00 and 9:00. I put two more people in the shelter. So at Webster, we've been able to shelter 68 people. The Best Western, we now have 137 people that have stayed their entire isolation and quarantine period, meaning they've stayed the 14 days or the 10 days that the health department required. And that is something that I am incredibly grateful that we're offer, we're able to offer the community. It has helped the universities, the homeless population, those that have been displaced because of COVID and have lost their homes or have been living out of their cars during the freeze back in February. We were able to put a lot of people up that maybe didn't have COVID or weren't exposed but needed a place to stay. The state had opened that up and provided them a warm place to stay. Next slide. So some of the normal operations that we've been having take place on top of our COVID response, we are still working on our hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant for 2020. There's been yet another revision that needs to be made as one of the projects that we applied for is now online and there is no cost for it. That grant, there's not many people that apply for it. So the committee is adamant that we find another approvable project to spend that money on. So we are taking that back to the drawing board and coming up with some ideas. So I imagine that'll be back before you in a couple of weeks with another revision to that project. We still do have the chlorine leak simulator for the Train to Roman exercise that will be finalized the end of this summer and probably taking place in September of 2021. We are currently working with Brad and IT. They've been assisting a lot on our cybersecurity homeland security grant. I think brought a lot because penetration testing and gap assessments is not something that I was fairly versed in. But after spending a lot of time and meetings with him, I can say I'm confident I know how to at least get us the resources that'll be beneficial for his department and the region. So something that we're also looking into adding would be some social engineering and cybersecurity training, not only for Slayne County, but also for the North Central Region. We have submitted our EMPG for 2020. This pays for our deputy director position. However, due to the COVID response, like many things, there's been a delay to our acceptance letter, but we've been assured that we'll still be receiving the same amount that we were given in 2019. We have submitted our local emergency operations plan for an informal review that is due on the end of August for the next four years. So hopefully we'll get some feedback and see if there's anything we need to change before we submit that to FEMA. And then it was mentioned and brought up recently and we are now updating our controlled burn policy. We've had some input from both citizens dispatch and rural fire and we're just trying to revamp and best serve the agricultural community when they're trying to do their CRP burns with their April 15th date. I know due to wind conditions and things that are out of our control, we're just trying to give them as much support and assistance as we can. And since that hasn't been updated since 2017, we've been meeting in chiefs' meetings with the rural fire to update that. Next slide. One of the more exciting things that our department has been able to participate this quarter, we did a Smoky Hill bombing range tabletop exercise with federal, state, and local partners. On the left hand of the slide is all of the agencies that participated and or observed the exercise. The scenario was an active shooter out at the Smoky Hill bombing range and the purpose was just to evaluate the process of crime scene security and the transfer of command. In November, we will be meeting back up with that same group for a full-scale exercise to utilize and practice a unified command structure in the same scenario. Next slide. So this is a weather cap. We are, our latest drought predictions as well as the precipitation that we received in March, we're sitting between three and four inches for last month. And I have just added some additional severe weather guidance. Over 2020, there was a increase of people that started to move to Kansas from out of state. So those that are coming from California or Florida that aren't familiar with tornadoes, just some sheltering guidance and the difference between a thunderstorm warning and a watch. Next slide. Your rural fire update may look a little different than past ones. We collaborated with dispatch and with their new CAD system. We were able to actually break down the call types that they went on, which I thought was particularly interesting rather than just the number of fire and medical calls that they did. So in the first corner, they had 206 calls for service, 86 of them being fire-related and 120 of them being medical-related. Of those 206 calls, 11 of them were mutual aid-related, meaning that there was more than one, more, one or more agencies responding either of the Slayne County rural fire districts or of outside agencies. So they are continuing to work on the new radio system project. They have completed their Train the Trainer and are now training their personnel for each district. And they are having chiefs' meetings to go over and implement operational guidelines for the new radio system. Next slide. And that is it. Are there any questions?
Michelle, on the, you stated that 135 people were put up in the hotel for their entire quarantine period. And I assume that Slayne County and your budget are, pays for that, is that correct?
So we are lucky enough that the state of Kansas, through our local disaster declaration, is supporting the Best Western sheltering operation. However, the Webster Conference Center sheltering operation is coming out and supported by county funds.
So if, if the state wasn't paying for this or whoever you're talking about, we would be responsible?
Correct.
And I, there's no way to plan for this, obviously. So in your budget line item, what is that, what is that called?
Actually, Hannah and I had met about this a couple of weeks ago and we actually didn't have a line item in emergency management's budget for disaster-related expenses. It was the assumption that it was tied to the general fund. So if we exceeded my operating budget, that we could then be supported and we would still be able to offer support to the community. However, we did receive with the sheltering at Webster actual disaster-related expenses. And through the assistance of Jim's office and the treasury, we did add a line item for disaster-related expenses. But that's not something that can necessarily be gauged on how much to put towards that line item because I would have never guessed that we would be in a pandemic for this long or to this extent. But it does, it's supported by the bottom-line budget of what the department has.
So in other words, the 68 people or 68 days, I don't know, people, I assume that we're at Webster Conference Center that was unfunded by the state or reimbursed, we paid for that?
Correct.
Is that correct?
And that, those that were sheltered before December of 2020 was covered by the CARES Act. And then those that were sheltered after, starting in January, are. CARES Act, and then those that were sheltered after, starting in January, are covered under the county. However, the state has mentioned that they will be doing the public assistance process for that expense. So as of right now, last I looked, we've spent over $9,000 on sheltering. So at the end of this semester, in May of 2021, I'll submit the documentation to the state. They will complete the public assistant process for us, and it'll be 100% back.
So that's, that's what this $9,000 is, is for that?
Correct.
Okay. And unfortunately, there's no way, like you said, to plan for a budget for a disaster.
Yeah, just jumping in here, County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. So yeah, disasters are by their nature something that's a little difficult to budget for. What has been fortunate in this circumstance, as Michelle mentioned, there's been a lot of federal aid. We got funding last summer in the form of the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And then the public assistance processes, normally the feds will only reimburse you 75 cents on the dollar, but they modified that this year for the pandemic. So as Michelle mentioned, they're, we'll be reimbursing 100 cents on the dollar just for the pandemic-related expenses. And then we also, as I've mentioned, we also have the American Rescue Act Plan funding coming as well, which can be used to, to plug holes. So we've gotten off, I will say, we've gotten off a little easy with this particular disaster. If we had a more normal disaster, like a large tornado, flood, that sort of thing, Michelle's budget would have been hit more severely.
Thank you. Any other comments by commissioners?
Michelle, the Smoky Hill Bombing Range typically does controlled burns extensively in the spring. Do they communicate with you as, and, and is their criteria for burning the same as a rural resident?
Correct. The bombing range actually does have and is applied for a county burn permit, so they have a burn permit number and follow the same regulations as everyone else does.
Very good. And same with the, with the wind and, okay. Very good. Glad to hear it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, thank you, Michelle. Very likely. And just a quick, quick question is, is that, is there any chance, will this be available for us to gather that information that you was put up there on the?
Yes, it will be posted to the county website. Under emergency management.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, item, next item.
Item number four, the county engineer update with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. So this is my update, kind of what's going on out at Roden Bridge with the engineering office since January, which was my last update. I'll start off with some construction projects that we've completed or nearly completed, and those would be some reinforced concrete box projects located on Minter Road, Cloud Street, Woodward Road, and then Cunningham Road. Cunningham isn't quite opened up to traffic yet. The contractor backed field yesterday, he was trying to beat the, the moisture. And so it just needs some surfacing and some final grading and seeding, and that project will be opened up. Some of the design projects that we've completed since January is the Minter Road Bridge Plans East Gypsum Valley Road, and I'll talk more, a little bit about that later, as well as the 2021 reinforced concrete bridge replacement projects. We completed the, the field work for the biennial bridge inspections, and we're doing the, the data import into KDOT's web portal. Currently, we're currently working on that. Completed designs for the asphalt overlays, chip seals, and crack seal projects, as well as for the materials that we bid out and have purchased, which includes the traffic beads and paint, the culvert pipe, and the aggregate and aggregate hauling. So that's some of the stuff that we've completed. So next I'll move on to kind of what we're looking at for the future. So up on the, the projector is our updated 2021 proposed road and bridge program, and these are projects that are, we anticipate to be constructed this year, not necessarily through the design process. And so I'm going to start off with our span bridge projects, which is the, the brown or orange rectangle on the map. And the one that we have there is, it's 160-foot reinforced concrete haunt slab project, and that's located on Minter Road between Gypsum Valley and Donmire Road. LNM Contractor was awarded this project for $556,656. This project was also awarded $200,000 from the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program, that grant, that is a reimbursement program. So as we take on the cost of that project, I'll be submitting reimbursements for that. And this, I talked to the contractor and they're looking at about a fall, is about the closest he can give me, a fall of 2021 for a, a construction timeframe on that. The next project that we're going to be working on, it's not shown on the map as far as the span bridge project, that is the Waterwell Road Bridge, which is west of Gypsum Valley, and it'll be another reinforced concrete haunt slab. We'll be designing that throughout this year and probably looking at a late 2023 construction timeframe. So again, that one's not shown on the map because it's not going to be built this year. Next, we'll move on to the reinforced concrete box construction projects, and those are the light blue circles on the map. The, the one that's still kind of a carryover from last year's program is the box on Niles Road, just north of Humberger. This project here is, one of the stipulations for the contractors, they can't, they can't be working on that project during harvest time activities. You know, it's on a paved road, and there's not a lot of roads around this project site. And so the contractor's going to wait until right after harvest is completed, and I'm the one who will define when harvest is completed, and then they're going to start on that project. So after they get done with that project on Niles Road, is when they're going to work on the, start on the 2021 RCB projects. And so I've got six sites, the projects were awarded to re-construction for $610,538.70. And I won't go through each one of them, but those are the rest of the blue dots on the map. And so they haven't told me which project they're going to start with that one, but they're going to pick one of them after the Niles Road project. So and as always, you know, we're always got to have a, a box package that we're working on, and so we're, we're currently designing and working on our next, our next round. And so that'll be probably coming up. Hopefully by the end of this year, we'll be ready for another round of boxes. The black stars on the map, those are our culvert replacement projects, and these are culverts on asphalt roads. And this project was awarded back in January to TNR Dirt for $266,582.50. And this is where, you know, the, again, it's an asphalt road, so it's a heavier traveled road. The road will be closed down, the road will be cut and excavated out, the old structure, the old pipe removed, a new pipe installed, backfilled, and then asphalt. So you know, it, it's a little more extensive for a pipe replacement project, a little more expensive because of the asphalt. And so we're, we're also evaluating, we're looking at other options, because one of the costs that I don't keep track of, and it's just a guess anyway, but that's just the cost to the public of, you know, shutting down a paved road. And so we're, we're looking at a, another option. Next month, we're going to meet with a sales rep where there's a company called SnapTight that they make a high-density polyethylene pipe. It's an insert. So you insert this inside of the existing pipe, and then you grout in between the two pipes. So it can be done under traffic, you know, and so it is a little more, it is fairly expensive, but compared to the asphalt, you're replacing the asphalt and the amount of the traffic's down, it could be very comparable and a good option for us. And so we're going to be evaluating that for another round of culvert replacement projects. So, because we, we do have quite a few culverts underneath blacktop roads that, that need to be taken care of, and so we, we need to be paying attention to them, and hopefully we can start dwindling down the number of, of pipes that are, need help.
And what did you call that product?
The, the product is called SnapTight.
SnapTight?
Yes. Yeah, so they, yeah, it's, so it's, you get sections of pipe, and you can push that through, and then you can, another section will come and snap, snap into it, and as, then you just keep pushing it through, through the pipe.
Thank you.
And quick question here, is that, on the, on the, I think it's a great scenario, but what happens, is there any way to go ahead and fix that culvert that has collapsed? How would you push it through there when it's offset like that?
So yeah, none of these are the one, pipes that are collapsed.
Okay.
None, yeah, none of these are. The ones that are collapsed were, we need to take care of right away. We, we need to do whatever it, we need to do to get that thing taken care of.
Okay.
You know, so there's, there's definitely no issues with sorry, safety for the public, you know, with the road collapsing. So most of these, they're either, you know, a lot of times a flow line, the bottoms of the pipe will start to rest out, sometimes they'll get, you know, holes, sometimes, you know, they, you know, they're, they're hidden, you know, because they're, they're hidden in the weeds and we don't see them very well, and so finally we go back, and then the, the bottom's completely out of it. But it hasn't collapsed yet. You know, and so those are the ones that, that, that we can, that would be an option, you know, for, for this year.
Okay.
So yes. Next, I'll move on to our, our road asphalt maintenance projects for, I'll start off with our, our chip seal projects, and those are the blue lines on the map. We've got 45, about 45 and a half miles of chip seal this year. The project was awarded to Circle C Construction for $909,592.60. And this equates to, usually when we're talking chips seal, we're talking about a cost per square yard. So this is actually, this price dropped from last year to $1.42 per square yard, but then it also equates to about $20,000 per mile to do this procedure. Next is the hot mix asphalt overlays, and those are the black lines on the map. So this project was awarded to AIPAC Kansas for a little over 1.3 million. So the, the projects on Old Highway 81 from K-143 north to the Ottawa County line, as well as Old 40 from the concrete pavement at 135 east to State Street, will be receiving a three-foot widening, three-foot asphalt widening prior to the overlay. So we're going to overlay that out, make sure it, it allows for what we call a composite shoulder, which is part asphalt, part earth. It allows for that heavier traffic and wider traffic, and you don't have that, to really help minimize that asphalt drop-off that we have. Other projects for the overlays are, you know, North Street from the UPS store to Old Highway 40, State Street from Old 40 to the city limits, so. And just as a comparison to the chip seal, which is about $20,000 per mile, a conventional two-inch overlay is about $160,000 per mile. So I think that's always really good information for me and for the commissioners, for you guys to have that as the public's calling up, because not everybody is in love with the, the chip seals. You know, but that, this is the reason why we do that, is because we can do so many more miles with chip seals. Now it's, you're not comparing apples to apples, but for a, a maintenance procedure, you know, the, the chip seal is way more economical to seal up the cracks in the road is than an overlay. The next is the, for the asphalt maintenance is our crack seal. We've got 52 miles of crack seal this year. We did open bids on April 7th. We did have two bidders, and I am still evaluating those bids. It's a little more unique bid situation with the contractors, and so I'm, I'm gathering some information from a contractor, the low-bid contractor. And depending on how that information goes is what I'll be recommending, you know, for the commission. Hopefully I'll have that in about another week or two. The, next I'll move on to our road improvement projects, and those are the brown or orange lines on the map. And I'll start off with Thatcher Road between Ohio Street and Crystal Springs, and this project is to upgrade the earth road to a gravel road. And the county of Road and Bridge Maintenance Forces will be performing that. So I won't have a whole lot to do with it, but because it's, it's a, it's, it's a pretty more substantial project for us, I didn't, I decided to put it on, on this map here. Another one that the county forces will be completing is the Simpson Road between Waterwell Road and Minter Road, and this is currently a gravel road, but we'll be upgrading that gravel road. So the, the maintenance forces will be regrading the ditches, replacing cross, crossword culverts. But mainly, the, the important thing that they're going to be doing is they're going to be adding structural capacity to the base of that road, you know, so they'll be putting down a, an aggregate base, as well as shaping it, because it doesn't do a whole lot of good if you can't get the water off the road. But this will increase the capacity of, of that road. And then finally, I've got the, the Simpson Road upgrade from Magnolia Road to Crawford Street. This project is not shown on the map because it will not be built this year, but I did want to bring it up because it's, it does take quite a bit of, of our time resources in my office. And this project is utilizing the federal dollars through the H, or the High Risk Rural Road Program. And, and this is all being administered through KDOT, and so we're going to be adding four-foot aggregate shoulders to both sides of the road, as well as regrading the ditch slopes to a flatter slopes and, and to create a, a safer roadway. The, the bid letting for this project is in July of 2022. I doubt that a contractor will want to get in there, you know, at the, at, in the late 2022, so it's still possible, but my guess is it's going to be a 2023 construction. So as I said, we're, we're continually in, in plan development, and we're also going through the right-of-way acquisition and the utility, utility adjustments for that two-mile project. Other projects on the, improvement projects on the map are FEMA mitigation projects. I put those on there in hopes that we can do them this year, but we're still kind of waiting on FEMA to finish their review of it. So I've got six projects that are located on that, and just to, to refresh your memory, those are the projects on Stimel Road, Gypsum Valley Road, and Cunningham Road. Those three are where the channel eroded very close to the, to the traveled way of the road, and we shut the road down, and so it'll be, the project will be to relocate the road around that erosion. The projects just north of Gypsum, so those are on Gypsum Valley Road and Kingman Road. Those projects do improve the road to an asphalt surfacing, and really the purpose of this is to mitigate the, the floodwater overtopping. Quite frequently, you know, those roads are overtopped and completely washed away. And so what, what these projects were, are going to be is to do some asphalt surfacing with base rock. I mean, it's, because you can't, you don't want to put just asphalt on anything, because your asphalt's going to fail. So it's going to be really a, an asphalt improvement project to try to, to mitigate some of that erosion. And then finally, the last one is, is a project on Fallen Road just east of Burma, and that project is to replace, oh, it's a small bridge down in there, but it's, it gets overtopped quite frequently, and it's an asphalt road, and so we're going to upgrade the, the service of that structure. So all the project documentations have been submitted to FEMA for their review. This, I actually got that completed a, a while back, and so, but it just, it's, we're going through a new, newer program, the Section 428, and it's, it's just taking them a little bit of time to get through that, so. But I am anticipating around a million dollars of funds, you know, to do these six projects. projects. And so we're just trying to be patient on that. The next project I want to mention is the a concrete containment structure around the road and bridge bulk fuel tanks. We were waiting on getting some utilities adjusted on that. We got those completed here a little while. And then last night, I finished up the plans and the bid documents for that. And so we're going to start advertising bid for that project hopefully tomorrow and we can get that project moving forward on that. So other projects that we have going around is the the local road safety plan. This program is also funded through the High Risk Rural Road Program through through KDOT. And so this is where there's a consultant and really a team of consultants and we're grouped with twenty other counties where they're evaluating all asphalt roads in the county. And what they're evaluating for is all all straight segments of the road. They're evaluating curves separately and intersections separately. And so they'll be giving us a report here when they're done about kind of the the state of our county and some recommendations. They're going to they're going to select ten projects, ten sites within the project and put together some more detailed project estimates for that, construction estimates. And we can take those estimates and then use those to apply for the high risk rural road improvement projects like we did with Simpson, like we're doing with Simpson. So but the one of the next steps is a stakeholder meeting. So all of the the individuals who would be interested in the safety of our county roads, we're having that on May eighteenth at the road and bridge office. I will be submitting or sending out invitations to that. So that's not only just the commissioners and the, you know, the road and bridge, but I'm, you know, I'm also looking at schools, you know, because you've got your bus drivers out there. The post office, the sheriff's department, emergency management, you know, so there's hopefully we can bring together a good group of people to to talk about the county road safety out there. So as far as the the budget update for our contractual asphalt account, which out of this account, we pay for our hot mix asphalt overlays, our chip seals, our crack seals and our shouldering. That has a budget of two point five million dollars and the twenty twenty one costs, which does include the bid costs as well as some estimates because I don't have I just have some estimates on the shouldering costs that I want to do this year. I'm a little under two point four million. The one twenty five account, which is our special bridge construction, has a current balance of a little over three point one million. Their twenty twenty one costs, which include the reinforced concrete hot slab, the reinforced concrete box projects, as well as the culvert replacement projects, is a little over one point seven million. The one twenty four account, which is our special road improvement fund, has a current balance of a little under one point two million. And our twenty twenty one estimates, that includes the road widening on Old Forty and Old Lady One, the gravel road upgrades, as well as the the Simpson Road improvements for the the asphalt portion of between Magnolia and Crawford. And that's just for the right away and utility adjustments, not the construction yet. We've got a current cost estimates of around five hundred and fifty thousand. I think that's it. Any questions?
Okay, Justin, I've. Thank you and congratulations on on a really well put together report here. It's pretty detailed and lets us know what's going on. My one question that I've got, and it may be a road and bridge question, and that is and somebody correct me if I've got the road wrong, but the Niles Road, which is down by the the shooting range, that we were going to replace a culvert across there and we were going to put that at the top of the list to get done. Is that a road and bridge question or does that?
Yeah, that's the maintenance division. Yeah, they're they're going to be doing that. So I I don't get involved with culvert projects on gravel roads, the the ones that our our maintenance forces put in. I don't get involved unless they ask me to get involved. And so I'm aware of the project you're talking about, but I I couldn't tell you an update on that.
Okay. Phil, we might make note of that, that to get a report from road and bridge on that project because we we promised those stakeholders that we would get on that just as quick as we could. And it's been several months and I haven't heard anything. May have it done for all I know, but.
Yeah, he could. I'm not.
Still like to have an update on it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very updated. Next item.
Item number five, the quarterly budget update with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, Philip.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So I have a really boring report for you, which is really exciting, right? You don't want your budget to be full of surprises, particularly this early in the year, and I'm happy to report it is not. We are doing quite well through the end of March with respect to both revenues and expenditures in our major budgeted funds. The one slight exception is Noxious Weeds, a little ahead of where they were last year on the expenditure side. That's because they made some chemical purchases in March that they normally would have deferred into the later part of the year. As I point out in my report, it's always a little difficult to predict how an entire year is going to turn out based on the first three months, but so far, no cause for concern. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I don't have any.
Phil, my only question, and this might be for a different time again, but we talked a couple of weeks ago or three about the the exorbitant gas bills we had at the jail and a couple of others. Have we had time to take a look at that and how does that affect our budget?
So as I mentioned at the time that I pointed that out, it is likely that those departments that are impacted by that, and that would be the the jail portion of the sheriff's budget, the senior services budget and the health department fund. It is likely that those three budgets will exceed their budgeted amount for the utility line item in twenty twenty one. However, all of those budgets came in under budget last year as a whole, so I'm not particularly concerned about the magnitude of those particular expenses so long as they do not reoccur. And if, you know, if if there is a necessity to supplement any of those budgets at the end of the year, we can address that from other resources. I have followed up with that company about updating our contracts and still have not heard anything from them. So continuing to poke that guy as I have time.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Okay, any commissioner comments?
Well, I'll go ahead.
Go ahead. I got to get my paper together here.
Are you going to comment on the building authority?
No.
No. Okay, last week, I will do that then. Last week, I asked that as a commission commissioners that we start reporting, you know, again on our where we take place in in these other units. And the board, Sling County City County Building Authority did meet this morning. There isn't a lot to report, so it's a pretty easy one to do. But Phase one is nearing completion as far as the building on the outside of the building and removal and steps and so on and so forth. They're working on finalizing the twenty twenty two budget. And that was really the highlights. There were no action items on the agenda today, so there was nothing that took place other than that. So it looks like this building project is is on pace to spend about seven hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars over three years if Phase two and Phase three are indeed approved. So that those are the highlights of the City County Building Authority meeting.
Okay.
And in regards to Central Kansas Mental Health that I'm a board member of, we met yesterday and it was a mirror thong meeting. Basically, the news is, and it's kind of old news, but recently, Central Kansas Mental Health Center and Five Sister Community Mental Health Centers were designated as certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic. And I thought the county and government was bad with their acronyms, but that's CCBHC. And anyhow, it this designation provides a comprehensive range of mental health and substance abuse disorder services and vulnerable individuals to meet certain federal criteria. And it's a two-year grant for this CCBHC model, and it can help reform and modernize the current mental health system in Kansas. The grant funding cannot be used to supplant other funding streams for current operations. And this is going to affect our fellows surrounding counties, and that includes Dixon, Lincoln, Ottawa and Ellsworth Counties. So really good news. A lot of unknowns, like with every other grant, so forthcoming.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to add, they also recently approved their twenty twenty annual report and they'll be bringing that in with some other information and statistics on the jail when the director comes in for budget presentation. So.
Okay. I attended the Salina Community Economic Development Organization meeting last week and there again, most of it discussion was about the the city, the county and housing shortage in Sling County and the amount of jobs that are coming to or here now and and where the builders and what they're looking for is land opportunities and building structures and and the cost of building nowadays compared to three years ago and and everything else. So that's a major concern in the Sling County area right now is the housing shortage that we have. So that's one of the things that come up about that. Anything else? Okay.
If I might expand on on that, Roger. I I would like to see Sling County divest itself of the property on South Ohio Street that would be prime property for real estate development and I'm sure the ground around there is. And by that, I don't mean that we give it away. I mean that we explore the possibilities of selling that, whether it be at at the appraised value or the value of what the land is going for at this times or future. But I I think it's time for us to that that land was originally acquired for the Expo Center potentially, and obviously, that's not going to happen now. So I'd like to get out of the land business that's going to be developed inside the city anyway and and see what our possibilities are of selling the ground or whatever their things are in place.
Any other announcements? Okay, hearing none. Next on the agenda is executive sessions. Ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, staff would request three separate executive sessions today. The first one would be under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss appointment of a position. We would request ten minutes and the attendees, in addition to the commissioners and myself, would be HR Director Marilyn Leamer and County Engineer Justin Mater.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Motion here. Mister Chairman, I move we recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for ten minutes and reconvene at ten thirty five.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to for executive sessions for non-elected personnel to convene here at ten thirty five. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Session. And I believe we need a motion.
Mister Chairman, I would like to make the motion that we allow the HR Director to extend an offer for an assistant county engineer to be made above the minimum of step six and and allow the HR Director to go forward with that.
Second to motion.
Okay, it's been motion moved and second.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
You're you're the chairman.
Okay, but there's we have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments? I take a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Now we will go into item two, executive session.
Our second requested executive session this morning would be under the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss negotiations with the bargaining unit. And we would like to request fifteen minutes for that. Attendees, in addition to the commissioners, would be myself and HR Director Marilyn Leamer.
Mister Chairman, I move we recess to executive session under the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act for fifteen minutes and reconvene at oh, I've got to do some hard math here. Ten fifty three, four, three.
Second to motion.
Okay, motion's been made to. We are back into regular session. We are back into regular session. We are back into regular session.